All right. Good evening, everyone. Okay. This meeting of the school committee will come to order, a special meeting. Is that not on? Is that better? Yeah, okay. Meeting of the, special meeting of the school committee will come to order. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any, any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Andrade?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Dr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mrs. Panchely?
Here.
Mayor Correa?
Here. You can have a salute to the flag. My pledge allegiance to the republic, for which it stands, one nation under our individual justice. Okay. So, we do not have, on this list, anyone signed up for public input at this time. Okay. And we have in open session, the first item on our agenda. It's been a crazy day, excuse me. First item on our agenda is the discussion and vote to approve the selection of a new superintendent of schools for the Fall River Public Schools. So, I would, what I'd like to do, given some thought today, but I'd like to get a sense of where everybody's at. So, I'm gonna ask for a roll call of the individual that you're selecting. And then we'll, from there, have a discussion, you know, based on, based on where we're at. Okay? We do have a question, yes? Mr. Costa?
My only objection to that is, I would like to hear how people feel about it before I select who I want to select.
Okay.
I would like to have a discussion for, I'd like to have some kind of a discussion first, before I say this is who I'm gonna pick, because I might change my mind after I listen to what my colleagues have to say.
Okay, I'm gonna proceed with the roll call of who everybody's, everybody wants. Okay. Unless there's any other objections, is there? Do I have to have a roll call of?
You can do that, right?
I can call them, right?
You want a, a roll, excuse me, you want a roll call of who we're selecting as of right now?
That's right. And then from there, that way we can kinda see where we're all at and discuss, and then if your mind changes by the end of the evening, then it changes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Martins.
I agree with Dr. Costa with regards to listening, having the discussion, having the discussion ahead of the vote. Once you state who you're interested in, then to have the discussion, that, that becomes rather, in my opinion, kinda productive. I think that I would like, I would like to listen to the pros and cons of, of the people, the finalists, and then make up, you know, my vote.
Okay. Mr. Costa, vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has certainly been a long process between the establishment of the search committee, the vetting in the search committee, interviews in the search committee, finalists, and another round of interviews. Spent the last several days vetting these candidates. With no disrespect to anybody sitting here, no comments that I hear tonight is gonna change my decision on my vote. And I would hope that members have come to their senses tonight, or consensus themselves, on who they want to support. I agree, discussion is good, and we probably should have it. I, I just think that, nothing I hear here tonight is gonna, is gonna sway or influence me in, in either direction. So, I'll defer to you as the chair, your position on it, but...
Yeah, I mean, again, the intent is to just get it out there, perhaps as a candidate that rises to the top in the first round, and it streamlines our discussion for this evening. Perhaps there's not a candidate, and there's a split. And, you know, we can kinda discuss, and maybe there is something that does cross somebody's mind tonight that makes it compelling. So, it's really about streamlining the process. We've all interviewed the candidates, we've all had the opportunity to mark up our notes on exactly who they are, to do our own independent research, to do site visits, to call them directly, which I've taken the opportunity to do in some cases, to call their references. So, you know, that's, that's really what the process is about tonight, streamlining that, that decision-making process. So, Dr. Costa?
I only would say that for myself, and I said it before, and I, I agree with Mr. Martin, and I can understand certainly exactly what Mr. Costa is saying, but for myself, I came here tonight knowing who I was going to vote for, or thinking I was knowing who I was gonna vote for. And I, I'm still open-minded to it. I'm, I still am not totally sure yet. So, if it comes to a straw vote, I'm going to abstain, because that's the best expression of how I feel right now, until we have a discussion. I yield.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll have a roll call of individuals and who they're supporting.
Mr. Andrade?
Malone.
Mr. Coogan?
Malone.
Mr. Costa?
Dr. Charles Granson.
Dr. Costa?
Abstain.
Mr. Martins?
Dr. Malone.
Mrs. Panchely?
Dr. Malone.
Mayor Correa?
Dr. Granson.
Who is this?
Okay. So, now the floor is open for discussion. So, it's, it seems that nobody, nobody supported Dr. Scott. So, if, if that still stands, or if anybody has any opinions about Dr. Scott, we'll, we'll speak about the other two candidates, the remainder of our time. Mr. Andrade?
I, I was someone who came in here, well, I've been, I've been back and forth for several days. You look, you look at the, the relative merits of one, the other, and more, and more to the point, actually looking at their weaknesses, because I think that, that's what this is gonna be decided on. Malone's in particular. He's, he's noted by many people as a loose cannon, that unable to work with, and that's the issue. He has, he has the experience, he has developed a number of budgets in a number of communities. Can he work with people? Can he be circumspect? That is the issue. And, and, and that's, for, for me, that, that's exactly what, what my vote would be decided on. I, I felt tonight, based on information that I had received tonight, that he could do that. I feel that in terms of, I know that he has a lot of support among, among the employees of the school department. I think that when I first ran for this office, I didn't need this job. I, I was happily retired, but I didn't like certain things that were going on. I knew that the morale was poor, and I, I didn't want those days to either continue or to, or to return. They feel that they will get their due from, from Dr. Malone, and, and that's the, the main reason why I support him. I yield.
Mr. Coogan?
I too, as obviously a lot of us are educators on the stage, some people come from the private sector, which creates a great balance for this committee. As the most recent person to leave the Fall River Public Schools and retire, I have a tremendous amount of contacts with people that are still in the schools, and over and over and over again, they have expressed their opinion to me that they support Dr. Malone. If we're gonna take this school district to another level, I think we need a working partnership with our teachers, our administrators, and all of our staff. And if they believe they can work with that gentleman after he met with them, sat with them, I, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with them. But, we're all in this together. I understand the concerns about some of his personal skills, but I believe he's honed them over the years, and from the references that I've heard from other members of the committee, they've said he seems to be getting stronger and stronger. If they judged me when I first started in education, I would never be sitting here. I was not a very nice person myself sometimes. But I do, you do grow up, and you figure it out, and I hope he's still learning, 'cause this is a job you gotta learn on the fly. But at this time, I'm gonna go with the people that work in this district, and I'm gonna support you. And I, I do think that that's the way you build a team. Said he had an open-door policy. I hope somebody tells me the door's closed and they can't get in, 'cause it would be a different discussion altogether. Thank you, I yield.
Doctor?
I tried to put this into perspective. First of all, I believe that we have three fine candidates, and, and I would like to, once again, congratulate the search committee for the work that they did. Many hours were spent in this room, by many of the people in this room, interviewing ten candidates, two hours apiece, including the individuals that ultimately made it to the finals. And, and I wanna say to people who looked at the finalists and maybe found something wrong here, or something wrong there, that there was not a single person who applied for this job, that you couldn't find something in their resume or in their background that if you wanted to, you could point to and say that was problematic. I think we did an excellent, and I'll say "we" 'cause I was on the committee, but so were many people here today, it was an excellent job. There was a lot of work to get us to this point. So, now we're here with, with three individuals. And, and one of the things that I said to the search committee, early on in our search committee, and, and I have to say this, the search committee had fourteen very different people. We represented a lot of different constituencies. We didn't all think alike. I, I said right at the beginning, let's put it all on the table, what is it we're looking for? And what I'm looking for, and what I was looking for, is very different from what some of the people on that search committee was looking for. And we came out with three candidates, and I don't think anybody on the search committee picked all three of candidates that ended up at the finals, which says that it was a very democratic process. So, I can only, as I look at these three candidates, say what I said to the search committee. You know, we share the same hopes for Fall River in the future, but for me, it comes down to what it is that I'm looking for, and I'm certain that it may be different what other people are looking for. What I'm looking for, and I said this before, so it shouldn't be a surprise to people on the search committee, I'm looking for a fresh start. I want a scholarly, collaborative, inclusive leader, who leads and listens respectfully to all points of view. He combines, or someone who combines new ideas with the best of what we already have here, and there's a lot that we already have here that's very good. I personally, and it's my opinion, put less emphasis on familiarity or past relationships. And it was obvious to me that many people on the committee, and many people in this community, including educators, feel very comfortable with Dr. Malone. And I escorted him around for five hours, and he's a wonderful person, I enjoyed being with him, I took him to lunch. There was a definite degree of familiarity there, that I think makes people feel comfortable, and perhaps less so with someone else. But, I put less emphasis on that, my personal opinion. I'm looking for somebody who had, has a clear compass, and someone who has the ability to self-reflect. Those are the characteristics that I personally am looking for. And when I walked in here this evening, and when I left the house this morning, that person was gonna be Dr. Granson. That's the person that I really felt that I would support. Now, I have to weigh that, on the other hand, with some realities, the realities of all of the people that are leaving our school system, all the principals that are leaving. I have to weigh that with the realities that I see that the city council didn't approve a budget last night, and I don't really know how that affects our school budget. I don't understand it well enough. And that, those two bits of information cry out for somebody with experience, and somebody who's very, very strong. And that's why I have a dilemma. And if I'm asked, who would I vote for right now, I think I still would vote for Dr. Granson. But I, I certainly can understand why people would want to vote for Dr. Malone. I yield.
Thank you. Ms. Panchely?
Thank you. I'm just gonna take a, a couple of minutes, just to really talk about positives and, and maybe some weaknesses of both candidates. I spent the last couple of days with Mr. Costa, really vetting the candidates, going on site visits, and, you know, Dr. Granson may be our next superintendent, and I think it's important to note that, I think if he is, we'll be fine, and he'll do a good job. And I think he brings a lot of strengths. I just feel like Dr. Malone is a better match. So, just real quick, I typed up some notes, I tried to highlight the key words, I think I'll just run down those, so we won't be at this for too long. Dr. Granson has a very strong network around him, Mr. Costa and I got to meet them. They are a very talented group of experienced people, and although he lacks some experience, I do think that they would be there for him, to mentor him, in, in, in areas that he may not be, you know, up to speed on, that we, that I feel Dr. Malone is more up to speed on. He has strong community connections and partnerships through Harvard and through some of the things he's done. I think he could bring some outside financial resources and grants to the district. He was described by one of the references as a peaceful warrior, and I, I did like that description of someone. In contrast to what we may think Dr. Malone, you know, he might be, I don't think he's going to be a peaceful warrior, but I, I did like that description of Dr. Granson. He did do his dissertation work in Fall River, on the turnaround work. He, just from the, from, in the interviews, he seems to know good instruction, not that I really know, but I've learned the buzzwords over the last two and a half years, and maybe he knows the buzzwords, too. But, he seemed to know what good instruction looked like. Speaks about equity and access and civil rights issues, you know, I think that was good. My concerns with him, mainly budgetary experience, I, I really think that this district needs someone who really knows how to build a budget. I, the city has moved to the zero-based budget, after what we've been through this year, I, I'm on board with that, and Dr. Malone has talked about that. We talked to references that talked about him doing it. We know he studied it for a couple of years, and then put it into practice in Brockton. Obviously, I, you know, I'm the mom on the school committee, but I also have my MBA and, and a background in accounting, that's important to me, and I, I think that shouldn't come to any surprise to anyone. It's not just important to me, but we also did focus groups, right, and surveys, that was the number-one important thing to, to, to the stakeholders, whether it be parents, teachers, administrators, the community. The people that participated in that said their number-one priority was budgetary experience. It concerns me what it would say for the school committee to vote for someone that really hasn't been a superintendent, doesn't have that experience. It's like we, we don't, we don't care what, what their number-one concern was for the schools. And then, he hasn't spent that much time in one district, he's moved around in a couple of positions in Springfield, a little time in Poughkeepsie, and, and from what I could garner, it just seemed like there were tough times in those, in those districts, and, and maybe, you know, he couldn't deal with the tough times, and I don't think Fall River's the easiest, I don't think the school committee is the easiest, and I'm afraid, I don't, and I'm afraid, I'm a little concerned that maybe he wouldn't be able to deal with all the personalities and the throw-up in Fall River, and, and the pressure that might come in a district in Fall River. And I want someone who I think can, can handle it and stick it out. And, and that all being said, if he's our superintendent, I'm gonna be right there on day one to support him, and do everything I can to make sure he sticks it out. And I think he'll, I do think he can be great, and he does have a great network. I don't want to make it seem like I would be nervous if he was our superintendent. Then, about Dr. Malone, I already talked about the budget in relation to Dr. Granson, just the opposite with Dr. Malone, quite frankly. Leadership, educational leadership was rated second, his references discussed that in a very positive light. We talked to the, Dr. Roy equivalent in Saugus, who had nothing but great things to say about the leadership that he brought in the short time he was there, and how disappointed the central office and principals were when he left, but, you know, there were circumstances that, with the changeover in the school committee, that really made things turn negative, but felt that they had direction for the first time in a long time, that they could really, really, you know, grab onto. He talks about, you know, his, him and his reference talk about how he loves to be in the classroom, how he works 24/7, passion for urban district, I just really felt deep down in my gut when he would talk, I, I just really felt that. We also talked to, I don't remember his name, but the attorney for the Brockton Administrative Association, who said he was one of the best superintendents that he's ever dealt with, and, and really felt like the collaboration with, between the union and Dr. Malone was great, great, and I think that's important. And then, my concerns with him were really alleviated after I spoke to his references yesterday. I can, I was concerned that he couldn't listen, because he does like to talk, and, and will he listen? And after talking to four different people, including the former mayor of Brockton, the attorney for the union, the, the woman in Saugus, and the deputy superintendent in Brockton, I really did not have those concerns anymore. They felt like, maybe when he was younger, that he had, you know, certain ways, and that he had really grown and developed, and that he really can work with others, that he really can collaborate, that he's a true leader. And they really described him the way he described himself. And with Dr. Malone, sometimes it may be a little hard to weed through some of the bravado, but if you can, they really, they really backed up everything that he, you know, said. And of course, you're giving references of, of people that are gonna talk positively, but I would say, going through this process over the last three, two days and talking to people's references, they brought up some negative things of, about all of the candidates, but I felt like they really addressed my concerns. And to what Mr. Coogan said, it's very important to me that, you know, the teachers and administrators that have reached out to us, you know, have been very supportive of Dr. Malone, and I think he'll bring enthusiasm, and I think he'll keep the morale up, and that's really important to me, because after all, I'm not in the schools, I'm not working with children, and I don't have any impact, direct impact, on what children do, and you do, and the people in the schools do. And it's important, very important to me, that they are supportive of who comes in. So, that's why I'm supporting Dr. Malone, that's not gonna change, no matter what anyone says, and not, no matter what anyone says tonight, because I've done all my homework over the last couple of months. So, with that, I yield.
Thank you. Doctor?
I just have a quick question on Mrs. Panchely. When you interviewed Dr. Granson's people, did you have access to anybody you wanted, or were the references that he provided?
It was sort of like a site visit, where he put the people in the room.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Martins?
The two candidates, Dr. Granson and Dr. Malone, each have certain negatives. Dr. Granson lacks experience in handling large budgets. Our budget is a hundred, a hundred and thirty-five mil, approximately, a hundred and thirty-five million plus twelve, about twenty-six million in grants. And he, you know, he lacks experience in handling that. Dr. Malone has experience in handling large budgets, but has experienced some difficulties with past school committees. I look at what they have said, people have said, and people have been calling me, emailing me, expressing their points of view, which I greatly appreciate, and it's a difficult task in finding or making a vote. The inexperience of handling a large budget is of concern to me, because of the fact that I don't see the Fall River Public Schools doing anything but net school spending, as they're the, the maximum in there. And, you know, and as far as past troubles with school committees, I don't know the, all the details of what it was, it's just what I could, I could find. And from my perspective, if he's not being cooperative with the school committee, I don't have any problem whatsoever by stating that, hey, cool your heels, that, you know, this is how it's going to be. You work for the school committee, school committee does not work for you, in there. And this is what you're going to do. Now, if you like it, fine, I will get along well. You don't like it, there's a door, and you can, you can leave. So, between the one having a great amount of experience, but has had some trouble with the past school committees, and I don't know, again, I don't know the depth of that, he is a little hyperactive, I agree, in there. But, when, I think he's a, he's a workhorse, and can do a good job. And it's up to the school committee, I don't want to use the word "control," but nevertheless to say, hey, what does the, what does the city of Fall River, the community of parents want for their children from the educational system in here? And then, if this is what they want, then, fine. Now, that's your direction. Make sure it happens. And we'll get into contract negotiations, whether they be Grant, Mr. Granson, Dr. Granson, or Dr. Malone, in, you know, in due time. But, you know, the contract negotiations are of utmost importance to me. The average, or the median income for a family of FOA in Fall River is $36,000. These two gentlemen are not gonna work for $36,000. They're gonna work for considerably higher than that. And I'm not willing to go to the upper limits of what was posted in the, in the act. But, I think we can handle the, anything that Dr. Malone might, might do. I'm sure it's going to be all positive stuff for the city of Fall River. I'm sure that Dr. Granson can, can learn, almost like on OJT, on-the-job training. He can learn about handling of large budgets. But I really would like to have someone who has the experience behind him. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just start off by saying that, that going into the search process, my goal was that whomever the finalists were, that if we could all agree that regardless of who that person was that became our next superintendent, that they would do a good job, that I could live with that. And so, you know, I've heard members talk about this was a difficult decision, and, and it should have been, because there were three great candidates to choose from. In fact, I, I would go out on a limb and say that the ten individuals that were interviewed were also, in a lot of respects, good candidates. They all came with their strengths and, and areas that needed to be improved upon. So, my, my comments tonight won't necessarily focus on anybody's shortcomings, but, you know, I, I, I did feel, and I still feel, that Dr. Granson does bring a, a level of professionalism to the position. I certainly know after talking with individuals on Monday, he has some very strong mentors, who spoke very favorably of, of not only his abilities to do the work, but his network of people that will surround him. And I think that's important. Whenever you lead in, in any capacity, it's always advantageous to have people around you that you can rely on for good mentorship and good support. And sometimes leaders miss that opportunity to rely on those individuals and, and make decisions that sometimes aren't the best. And so, it was clear to me, talking to Robert Peterkin from Harvard, who was the former superintendent in Cambridge, someone who knows what it takes to be a superintendent in a large urban district, the types of abilities that he expressed to me with Dr. Granson was, was remarkable. There were also individuals in the room who talked about his work at Commerce High School, and also English High School. His abilities to focus and develop programs for special populations, which is very concerning to me. It's something I looked at throughout the interview process. We have a large ELL population, Dr. Granson helped develop programs at English. He was very astute in his approach towards how he would define and oversee special education and the rights that he felt that students were entitled to. I think his comment in his second interview was that he had observed the interaction between a faculty member during one of those meetings that was not what he had expected, and, and had asked that person to step out of the room and had a conversation with him. In addition, I had an opportunity to spend time with Dr. Granson in the district. He was very knowledgeable of Fall River, in fact, did his dissertation for his doctorate degree, doctorate degree, excuse me, in, in, here in Fall River. Was very comfortable speaking to the central administrative staff, in fact, remembered and recalled some of them through that process. I watched him interact with students in the classroom. And he was a gentleman who easily navigated his way around the classroom, spoke to students, was engaging. You know, Mr. Martins mentioned, and it may have been just an oversight by Mr. Martins, but in Poughkeepsie, Mr., Dr. Granson oversaw 6,000 students, 800 staff, and a budget of upwards of $100 million. So, you know, I, I, I think it's important, when we talk about people's experience, that, you know, we, we certainly convey, particularly when these people will become potentially candidates in other districts, that we're, that we're accurate in that information. And so, I, I wouldn't want Dr. Granson to be labeled as someone who doesn't have budget experience, when it's clear that while in Poughkeepsie, he had that. experience when it's clear that while in Poughkeepsie, he had that budget experience. So I, I'm content, I really am, with whatever the vote is here tonight. Dr. Malone does bring a lot of passion to the job. I do have some concerns about relationships and past relationships, both at the state level and locally in districts that he's been in. But as Ms. Panchley pointed out, she and I had an opportunity with technology through Bluetooth, were able to discuss and question references together. And so he had very favorable, positive recommendations from people that he had worked with throughout his tenure. And in particular, an individual who I thought if there was anybody who was going to have anything controversial to say, was very complimentary of, of the working relationship that they had. And this person knows the city very well, was born and raised here in the city, knows the players very well, and was very complimentary. So regardless of how this vote turns out, I think it's incumbent upon this entire school board to unify and get behind whoever our next superintendent is, because clearly there's a lot of work that needs to be done, and it needs to be done quickly, with hiring of key positions, some of which we know about, some of them of which we may not know about until after this evening. So I would say that it's, whoever comes on board, they got a tough task, and it's going to require a community effort, not just school committee, the city, business leaders, teachers, and all who are interested in education to come together and be supportive of whomever takes that role. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll give my opinion as well. First, I want to say thank you to the search committee. You know, I, when I was charged with organizing the search committee, I reached out to Vice Chairman Mark Costa, and he helped me really organize my thoughts on that. We tried to make this process as certainly non-political as possible and made sure that teachers were involved, administrators were involved, parents, nonprofit. I only had one representative really from my, my staff on the entire committee, and the rest was really a community, community effort. I'm sorry?
Student.
Yep, and students as well, yeah. So we tried to make this as inclusive as possible. So I want to thank the committee for their hard work. I think we had a ton of excellent candidates when I reviewed the resumes in my office, and I think that the committee did a great job selecting the top three. And as a lot of us have discussed over the last several days individually, you know, I think the district will be satisfied with any of the top three. And I think all three of them will do an excellent job, or will, would do an excellent job here in Fall River. But we do have to choose one person at the end of the day. I want any of those candidates that are selected, whichever, whichever one is selected, to know that they will have the support of the mayor's office 100%. I want teachers to know that, I want administrators to know that. You have my support, okay? We certainly have, at times, conflicting strategies on how to get to the same goals, because in no way is my goal ever to strip teachers or schools or students of services or classrooms and all the other things that, that go into educating our youth. That's not the goal. But the strategies on how we get there and how we use the $114, $116 million that we spend on education are going to be different at times. And that's really what I did, what I was looking at when I was reviewing the, the three finalists. And that was really important to me. But I wanted to say that I wanted, I want everybody here to know that no matter who is chosen, they will have the support of the mayor's office. So I want, I want you to all know that. And they will, and I will work with them 100%. However, there is a candidate that rose to the top for me. And we all have our own personal attributes that draw us to particular individuals, and there was one person that, from my, from my perspective, really, really was, was advantageous, I think, for the community, and that was Dr. Granson, as I stated earlier. Now, I'm probably the wrong person to ask about experience, and, and a few of the committee members did ask me about that, and I really am the wrong person to ask, because I believe that somebody that may not have the length of experience in terms of time should not be really disqualified. And that's really the only thing I've heard as a negative, quote-unquote, negative thing or not, not a strength of Dr. Granson, which I, I think shouldn't really be a disqualifier in any way. And the reason I don't think that is because, number one, he certainly has the academic credentials. So if you look at academic credentials, he's there, there's no question about it. He has the support systems behind him with his mentors and the mentors that he spoke about and the references he also has. When you talk to him, and I got an opportunity to speak to him one-on-one, he's passionate, but exactly, that was a great description, I didn't know that description. The peaceful warrior, that's an excellent description of him. He's somebody that's going to fight for, for the teachers and for kids and for students, but in a, in a way that is professional, in my opinion, and is, I think, going to be ultimately probably more effective. Because this job, as I know, and I'm learning every single day, is all about compromise. And it's all about compromise. And when you start at a position of, of ego or, or non-compromise, you're disadvantaging yourself. And I'm learning that on the city side every single day. Another advantage of somebody that is sometimes untested or has, not as experienced, is they are a learner. They're continuously learning new things. And I think you need somebody that adapts and that can come into the district from a professional sense, take us into a new direction, or can continue the direction we're going in. We'd certainly, I see Fran back there, certainly, you know, improve the things that are already great, but also you want to be creative too. You want to try new things. And our superintendent that's leaving us was not afraid to try new things, which was one of her biggest successes, right? She had successes. And that was one of them, that she tried new things. I think Dr. Granson will bring that to the table. He's creative. He talked about a lot of the very specific things he has done in the districts that he came from, you know, and I, I think the personal stories really got me in his interview. And he was very measured, very calm individual. He listened to this committee. We were able to get through the full interview, which didn't happen with one of the other candidates. So, you know, from my perspective, I think that he really rose to the top as the person that was really measured between all three of the finalists. He had kind of the best elements of all three. And I, I think that that was what my decision is based on, and I feel very strongly about that decision. You know, over the last several days, I, you know, I want to make sure that, I go on the record to say this, because I want the committee to be aware, you know, as mayor, I have received calls from other mayors, I've received calls from the state level, because, you know, certainly we're going to have to deal with the state on a lot of different issues. And there were some concerns about Dr. Malone that, you know, I'm not going to go into detail, I don't think that's necessarily fair to him, but I think if you look at this, at the landscape of our current superintendent search and you look at those finalists, you know, Dr. Malone is not a finalist anywhere else. Dr. Granson is not. I just confirmed it, I just confirmed it with, I just confirmed it with Glenn Kucher just now, just via text, so.
He was a couple of years ago.
So he's no longer. So just as of right now, I confirm with Glenn Kucher that he is not. Okay, well, Glenn Kucher has confirmed it via text, so I'm hearing some, maybe that's misinformation, but the person that we hired to give us our information just told me he is not. Dr. Granson is a finalist somewhere else, and he had an, an offer on the table in another district, and he decided to not take that offer because he felt that strongly about being here in Fall River, an actual offer on the table. I think that speaks volumes to his character and his commitment. I don't think he's going to be a guy that's going to bounce around, and he's not, and this is, I think, very important, he's not at the top of his career. And that's okay. And that's okay. You have an individual, Dr. Malone, who I think is extremely capable as well, you know, in terms of his abilities, but he has already, as he said, I think, three or four times during his interview, he already achieved the top of his career as Secretary of Education. That drive of reaching the top of your career is not there. So I, I don't see that as the ideal person that we need in Fall River right now. And I feel very strongly about that. That's not to say that if he, you know, I, I don't have to say that, I didn't have to say that, because I already saw how the votes are kind of leaning. But I wanted to say that because that's the truth, and I wanted to be upfront about it. But that's not to say that if he is selected by this committee, and he is selected by individuals on the search committee, that I can't work with him. That's not what I'm saying at all. I will work with him. So I wanted to make sure that that was out, but I couldn't just keep that in and not say it. I think that's really important to, to have instated, and I've had my personal conversations with individuals on the committee. So just to wrap up, I think Dr. Granson is the right choice for Fall River right now. I think he has a very unique opportunity here to work and to, to grow with our teachers, with our administrators, with our student body. He has the opportunity to grow. Because in some cases, he's not as experienced, you need to start somewhere, right? I mean, that's, that's really important. So I think with all his credentials, with all his mentors, with his excellent resume, I think he's the right choice for Fall River. Other comments? Okay. Oh, yep, Dr. Kugan, I'm not Dr. Kugan, calling you a doctor now, whoa. Mr. Kugan.
I, I only take exception with a couple of things you said, Mr. Chairman. I believe, I believe our administrators and our teachers are very, very perceptive. And I believe that the time they spent with all the candidates gave them a good idea of which way these candidates were going to be. I think, I think they understand, and in fact, I know they understand in Fall River how people carry themselves, how they talk, might not always be just the way they are. I believe that, that if we support our teachers and get into a collegial relationship with the school committee, the superintendent, the staff, we can build a stronger school system. So that's why with the emails and all the notices and the phone calls we've gotten from, from staff throughout the district, I, I believe to build a strong team, I'm going to respect their wishes. I think that's the way to go. I think, I don't know if that's always been done, and I do also have to compliment the committee. I, I know that superintendents in Fall Rivers, in Fall River have not always been hired that way. There's been other ways of doing it, but this committee grounded out night after night after night, they vetted everybody completely, they checked references, they did a thorough job, and, I mean, they, they did a great job, and it's the way people should be hired in a district, and I compliment them. I mean, I don't know if I could have done all the work they did, between driving around, checking references on the ride, they grounded out, and I give them all the credit in the world. But I am going to stick with our teachers and our administrators that spent time with all the candidates and, and listen to what they have to say right now.
Mr. Kugan, are you talking about just teachers in general, or teachers that were on the search committee and administrators for the search committee?
I'm talking about teachers in general. I believe that the teachers that were on the search committee talked to their colleagues. I believe they, they let people know. I believe the visits to the school, they saw other teachers. I believe the word spreads out throughout the district as it would when any of us visited a building or things. They, they have their own network, and I respect it. And I do believe that that's what they're thinking of.
Okay. No, you know, I, I agree with you, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with, with teachers, and that's all I'm saying, I just felt that through the interviews that I had, you know, we're selecting the person that rises to the top in the interviews, and that's, you know, that's what I felt. I mean, again, I think that to discredit a particular individual, from what I'm hearing from the committee, I haven't had the opportunity to speak to teachers necessarily one-on-one. I am in the middle of a budget and a lot of other stuff going on on the city side.
Absolutely.
And I'm in a precarious position, precarious position because of my role as school committee chairman and mayor, that gets complex. But, you know, when I hear people say on the committee here that, oh, well, he's on test city, Granson, I'm talking about, you know, our superintendent, our current superintendent that's leaving was an assistant superintendent. You know, she, she wasn't a superintendent from another community, she didn't, didn't have a doctor's degree, but she was creative, she listened to people, she built up the departments, is what I'm being told, you know, that's what I've been told, you know, I haven't been...
I hope you're careful there, Dr. Krueger.
Dr. Krueger. So, you know, I, I don't necessarily think that somebody should be discredited because of their lack of experience or they haven't held a particular position before, because then how do you ever progress? How does a teacher, you know, become, you know, an administrator, or an administrator become a superintendent? You gotta, you gotta start somewhere. So, you know, I just, that's the only thing I'm speaking to in terms of, of what I hear from some of the committee members. So, yes, Doc, Doc, wait a minute, Mr. Kugan, you want to respond to that, and then Dr. Costa?
Yeah, I do, I do. I think you get tested by, as you just explained, the steps that our assistant superintendent took. I believe if Dr. Granson had stayed in Poughkeepsie, he might be the superintendent there right now. I believe that when you develop a network of people, or you stay in a district and you grind it out, it helps you down the road. I think the lifespan on a superintendent in this district should probably be three or four years, as in almost all urban districts across the state. So when they grind it out and they work a little longer than that, God bless them. But I believe that that's how you move up. You gave an example. I think that if, if those positions had led to something else where there was some continuity and a little bit more long-term, I'd be with you right now. But that's how you do it. That's how the former superintendent did it.
Okay. Doctor?
I just want to say, one thing is that I have a great deal of respect for the opinion of administrators and teachers. There's no question about that at all for me. I also am aware that we have a very interesting dynamic kind of going on here, where there is a lot of anxiety when we lost the present superintendent. People were feeling uncertain about their future, we, they're worried about pink slips, they're worried about everything, we have people leaving the district, there's a lot of anxiety out there. We have negotiations that are going to be coming up soon for two of our major unions, teachers and administrators, there's a lot of anxiety out there. I happen to be, as Mr. Costa was the person who took Dr. Granson around, I was the person who accompanied Dr. Malone around. We spent five hours together. We talked a lot in the car. Every school that we went to and every place that we visited, when he walked into that school, he knew that school. When we walked into the Viveris, he knew people by name. He walked right up to the principal who was leaving and tried to talk him into coming back. He, he immediately connected with every teacher that he went to, and he knew his stuff. He knew what was going on in that classroom. And what I saw was an immediate comfort level that the teachers felt. And I think that we have teachers who are trying to feel that comfort level again because of the anxiety that they feel. So I certainly can understand why teachers support him. I could understand also that if I was looking as a union member, I used to belong to the FRAA, and in his interview, he said that he was going to throw lawyers out. I already told Attorney Assad that maybe we won't need him so much anymore. And, and I would say that if I was in the FRAA and, and a new superintendent candidate said he was going to throw the lawyers out, and he was going to, you know, negotiate directly with me, I think I'd probably like that idea. So there's a lot of reasons, I think, that I understand why people feel close and affinity to him and would like him. There's a comfort level there, and there's a familiarity level there. I guess I put that aside, because I also look at the reaction of parents to Dr. Granson. And there were several parents, or at least two, that were on the search committee. And, yes, he made a statement during the final interview, having to do with taking an administrator out, that they felt were creating hostile environment at an IEP meeting, which is something that some parents who have encountered, when they've gone to IEP meetings, feeling kind of overwhelmed, that, that moved them, that touched them. But, but the thing that touched me, he didn't say in the final interview, but he said it in the preliminary, and I'll remember it well, and, and he's not the kind of person that likes to talk about himself. He's kind of a humble man, I think. That's how I wrote, I used to write, I wrote that about him. And he said something when he was asked about, one of the parents asked him about his feelings about special ed, and he said, "Well, the other day I was in the grocery store, I like to go to the grocery stores," he said, "of the places where I work." And I ran into a student that I had a few years earlier, who was a special ed student, who had had a lot of difficulty, who had graduated. And you, and he said, the student came up to me and he said to me, "Thank you very much, Dr. Granson, for helping me graduate. You're the only person I ever had that didn't treat me as if I was different." And that stuck with me. Now, maybe it's because of my background, maybe that I'm very sensitive to those kinds of things, but those are the kinds of things that parents told me a lot, and, and that moved me. So I think that that just reinforced the kinds of things that I was looking for. And, and other people had other things that they rightfully were looking for, and, and I certainly accept certainly what Mrs. Panchley said about the budget. I, I mean, when I have a question about the budget, I ask her, so it's not my area of expertise at all. But I am supporting Dr. Granson because it's what I feel is right for me.
Mr. Andrew.
I'd like to reiterate what has been mentioned about the, the search committee. I think it's the way to go. I know that there was a lot of disagreement among the members of the committee, but that's the way committees work. And on the plus side, we did get diverse opinions from, from a number of people. So, so everybody's input was duly noted and reflected in the people who made the, first made the finalists cut, and, or first made the, the top 10, and then the, the final three. Secondly, I think I know which, which way the, this vote is going to go, but let's say it goes the other way. I think it's very important for all of us to rally together, we're all in this together, and to make... and to make this work. And I really think that some of the fears that people have about Dr. Granson are not well-founded. I think he would also be good for this district, and I would certainly work with him as well as I would work with Dr. Malone. And the one final thing is, let's say, I don't expect this to happen, I certainly don't hope that it would happen, let's say for whatever reason it doesn't work, whichever person that we choose as a superintendent. We can do what we can do, particularly if we have a united front, we can put some pressure on the superintendent to change something that he's doing. However, you have a lot more power than you realize, particularly if you are together. Singly, no, but together, you can accomplish a lot. And all you have to do is read about some of the things that have happened in districts where some of our finalists have actually worked. So don't be mute if there is a problem. Thank you.
Mr. Coogan.
Motion to vote?
Okay, so...
I'd like to continue discussion. You didn't recognize my hand, there you go.
Okay, I didn't see your hand, Mr. Martins, go ahead. Also, I just want to correct, I guess Jim is telling us that Mr. Malone, and I apologize to Mr. Malone, is a finalist in New Hampshire?
Yes.
Okay. That was different than what was sent to me. Okay, thank you.
Uh-oh.
It's not on camera, don't worry, they can't hear you. So I apologize to Mr. Malone. Mr. Martins.
Certainly, the two candidates under discussion could perhaps do a good job. But I look at what a person has accomplished as a means of determining what the individual will accomplish in there. And Dr. Granson did his doctoral dissertation based on Fall River, but there's a big difference between getting data and making a, you know, a book, actually it comes out to be, a dissertation with regards to the findings in there. Big difference between that and actually doing the work. It takes a lot more pressure, a lot more understanding in doing the work rather than simply writing about a particular school system. When I look at this, I look at, I mentioned about the budget, and Mr. Costa corrected me, yes, it's in here, but there certainly isn't, you know, the number of people that were assisting in the finance area is quite large, and you're not going to get that kind of assistance in Fall River. When I look at and compared the qualifications between Dr. Granson and Dr. Malone, Dr. Malone's qualifications are impeccable in regards to what he has done, not only as a superintendent, but as the Secretary of Education of Education in Massachusetts, in addition to that with what he has done with regards to school building assistance in there, when you're talking of millions of dollars, you know, and putting a high school together for $54 million, looking at other issues, it just goes on and on in regards to what his accomplishments are. And I just want to close with, and I yield right after this, with the fact that he admitted that he had some concerns with a couple of school committees, but we don't know the details about that. And it's not fair to expand or to say, hey, well, he had some problems which we don't know the details of, so therefore he's going to have problems here. We don't know that. We don't know that Dr. Granson might not have problems here either in there. So, you know, it's, what do you do about a problem? And I've already stated that the, all of them, Dr. Granson and Dr. Malone, know that they work for the school committee. And if the school committee tolerates something that's not proper, then it's, you know, shame on us. And it's to say, hey, remember who you work for, and let's get your act together. I yield.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to have a motion to vote. That was made by Mr. Coogan prior in this discussion. So we're going to have a roll call first of the individual's name. Question?
Do you want me to make a motion?
No, that's the motion for the actual candidate, the one that you have on your hand.
I need a second on the motion.
Second.
Well, I didn't make the motion, I'm just asking if somebody makes a motion.
Roll call.
Okay. We're going to call for a roll call ballot, and then there will be a motion to vote. So the roll call ballot is the person that you are choosing for superintendent of schools. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrade.
Malone.
Mr. Coogan.
Malone.
Mr. Costa.
Granson.
Dr. Costa.
Granson.
Mr. Martins.
Malone.
Mrs. Panchley.
Dr. Malone.
Mayor Carrera.
Dr. Granson. Okay. Seeing that it's four to three, and that four is the required amount necessary to declare a new superintendent, is there anybody that would like to change their vote at this time? I would ask that we do amend our votes, those that did not fall in the majority, to make this decision unanimous, and in good faith, we begin the process of working with our new superintendent who has rightfully achieved the majority. So I will ask that somebody makes that motion to reconsider in the majority.
Oh, in the majority.
Motion reconsidered.
I don't know of these things. Second.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I guess you don't need it in the school committee, in the city council side you do. So there's no motion, so...
There's no motion, just need a motion now.
Oh, that's right, okay. So, Mr. Coogan, would you like to proceed with your motion?
A motion that Matt Malone be appointed superintendent of the four public schools subject to successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreed upon to the candidate in the school committee and signed by both parties or their designees.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Sorry about the confusion.
Mr. Andrade.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Dr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mrs. Panchley.
Yes.
Mayor Carrera.
Yes. Okay, we have a new superintendent. Okay, the next item on the agenda is executive session.
Motion for executive session.
Second.
And what is the item for executive session, Mr. Assad?
Be pursuant to Mass. Law Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, specifically the superintendent of schools to be selected by the school committee in open session at the June 22, 2016, special meeting of the four of our school committee, namely Matt Malone. We will reconvene, there may or may not be a statement at that time.
Okay. Motion to enter executive session has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrade.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Dr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mrs. Panchley.
Yes.
Mayor Carrera.
Yes. Okay, will be an executive session. Anybody here? Okay, the meeting will come back to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Andrade.
Here.
Mr. Coogan.
Yep.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Dr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Martins.
Here.
Mrs. Panchley.
Here.
Mayor Carrera.
Here. And do we have anything to report from executive session? There's no report, seeing no report, is there a motion to adjourn?
Subdued. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Andrade.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yep.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Dr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mrs. Panchley.
Yes.
Mayor Carrera.
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Jim.